We are ready for liftoff. So you're only gonna have to listen to me a lot for about the next couple of minutes, and then we'll get the candidates speaking. Firstly, we want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. We're going to get started as we have an awful lot to cover. We're gonna hear all from the candidates tonight, the focus is gonna be on them. My name is J.R. Phillips. I'm your current Chair of the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee. I'm also one of the Vice Chairs on the Board, and I own Phillips &amp; Co. Real Estate here in town. And I'm gonna be your moderator tonight, and I ask for a lot of runway. This is not what I do for a living, so I'm gonna try to do the very best I can. We started the night off finding out we only had one microphone, so we're gonna be doing our very best to move the microphone between the candidates, and at times it may not look as smooth and sharp as scripted as you would like, but we're gonna make it happen. So before we get started tonight, we have a couple local constituents that we want to call out. We have the San Diego Tax Collector, Dan McAllister, has joined us tonight. Our current Mayor, Matt Hall, is with us tonight. And our former City Council Member, Dr. Mark Packer, is here. Please step in for audience, give a kiss. Tonight, we have two candidates for Mayor, which will be voted on by all registered voters in Carlsbad. We have two candidates running for Council Member in District 3, and we have six candidates running for Council Member in District 1, with four in attendance and two that were unable to be here this evening. Their nameplates have their names and which district or position they are running for in this coming election. Each candidate tonight will get 90 seconds to give us an opening statement. We've asked them to share why they feel they are qualified to serve as our City Council Member or Mayor. Then we have several questions we have prepared tonight. They will get 60 seconds to answer each of those. We also have some yes and no questions to ask on the second half of the forum tonight, and they will have signs in front of them that they will hold up high to let you know where they stand relative to those questions. Lastly, you, the audience, can submit questions tonight. Daryl is right here, he has the question cards and pens. If you'll make your way over to Daryl as you have questions, he will take those from you, and then he will help you to get these over. We'll make sure they get over to Brett, which is gonna filter through those and make sure that we don't have any redundancy or repetitive questions. Candidates, tonight Catherine McGannon, our past Board Chair here at the Chamber, current Board Member, is going to serve as your timekeeper. I think you can all see her right there in the front row. Gonna pay special attention to Catherine tonight. She will give you the sign when you have 30 seconds left, then she'll give you another sign when you have 15 seconds left, and then lastly, she'll hold up the big red stop sign, and I think we all know what that means. So with that, I think you're done hearing from me, and it's time for us to begin. So we're gonna start right now with opening remarks, and we're gonna start, we didn't pick any order, we're gonna try to keep this simple tonight and go down the row and then alternate. So we're gonna start with Ray Pearson, who's running District 3, you have 90 seconds here.
Listen, I want to thank all of you for attending. I want to thank Brett, the Board of the Chamber, and the Chamber team for holding this very important forum for all of you. I know you took time out of your day. My wife Karen, this is my daughter there, and I, with our youngest son Dane, moved here to Carlsbad 15 years ago. The reason we came to Carlsbad was because of how well the city was managed, the beaches, the lagoons, the community spirit, and particularly, again, how well the city was managed, and the low crime rates, and the traffic was very low when we came here as well. The businesses were treated well, the residents were involved in the future of the city, and continue to be that way. My public service and commitment to Carlsbad has been over the last 15 years, and recently in the last eight years, I've served on the Carlsbad Unified School District Board of Trustees. So what I'd like to do is give you my qualification to serve on the city, and it starts with my demonstrated commitment to all of Carlsbad, not one certain group. My executive experience running businesses for Westinghouse Broadcasting and Cable gives me the business acumen to actually be able to solve our budget problems as they are. So I'll end it with that, right now, thank you again.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Preya Batel, I am a Council Member that serves District 3, and I am delighted to be here, thank you to the Chamber for hosting, and thank you to all of you for being here tonight. So I have had the privilege of serving for the last four years as your Council Member for District 3 and of course, the city at large. I grew up here in Carlsbad, we have three generations here in Carlsbad, my parents and my 19-month-old. And what I would like to say is that over the past four years, though it's been a dynamic time, I think I've been somebody who's provided consistent and collaborative leadership. Something that I know that I am very proud of, making sure that we're building bridges as we're working together, and making sure that I'm representative of something that I want my child to be able to look up to. In the last four years, we've had the ability to work on many things, whether it's housing and homelessness, sustainability, working with our business community on economic development, and then also ensuring that as we continue to push forward, we're forward-thinking and that we're innovative as a city. I look forward to continuing to do that as a Council Member. I have earned the trust of many of our local community members and also our organizations. I'm endorsed by our Public Safety Associations, both the police officers and firefighters, the North County Realtors Association, and really looking forward to making sure that I continue to earn your support and vote, and look forward to continuing to work together as we move forward into the future. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I want to thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Mike Curtin, and I'm running for Mayor. Having grown up here, my character and values are a product of this city. After school, I moved away from Carlsbad and enjoyed a business career that spanned the country and the globe. The last few years were devoted to working with venture capital firms, going into their non-performing assets and portfolio companies, evaluating and turning around liquidating where required. That experience gave me the applicable skill set and transferable to public service that I believe qualifies me to be your Mayor. Having come back to Carlsbad 15 years ago, I've enjoyed a peaceful, stress-free life and retirement, devoted mainly to volunteer service to the community. But I've watched with concern over the last few years at the direction of the Council and the lack of vision that I saw. And so, when it came down to it, and nobody else in Carlsbad would step up to run against my opponent here, I felt I owed it to my hometown. And so, that's the very reason I'm running. And I believe it's Carlsbad just has good leadership.
Good evening, I'm Keith Blackburn, running for Mayor. Thanks, Mom. Let me tell you a little bit about my foundation, then I'll go into a little bit of experience. 35 years ago, my then-wife dragged me to the street fair, kicking and screaming. But once I got here, I started realizing what the downtown looked like. I started looking around the city, and I fell in love with Carlsbad. And that, everything took place right then at the street fair. So for 35 years, I've been here, raised my daughter, raising two grandchildren, all going through the school system. And then I got an education. I went back and to school and got a Master's degree in organizational management, hoping that that would translate into helping me with my job at the time, which was a police sergeant. And I served as a police sergeant here in Carlsbad for 35 years. Then I got involved with business. I was a founding member of the Outlet Center here in Carlsbad, which gave me a huge amount of knowledge on business and business finance. And then eventually, I got elected to the Council. 14 years on the Council, and all of the time I was on the Council, learning, learning from some of the best other Council Members, and getting a great foundation of experience. And that's all what I bring, this is the whole package that I bring to the mayoral position here in Carlsbad. It's pretty good timing.
So as we said, Anthony was unable to be here this evening, and he's asked us to read his opening statements on his behalf. So I did fib a little, you do have to hear from me just a little bit more. This is Anthony Bono. Hello, my name is Anthony Bono. I apologize for not being able to make this wonderful forum. However, I'm presently under anesthesia, and I had surgical procedure that began at 3:10 this afternoon. I have lived in Carlsbad for 25 years, in District 1, for 17 of those 25 years. I know our community, I live, work, and play in our community. Above all, I love our community. I'm a career politician, I'm not a career politician, nor do I have those aspirations. I am just a common man who wants what is right for our city. Since 2019, I, along with others, in a small passionate group, have been working to hold politicians accountable for their actions. I don't care what side of the aisle you are on. If you do something that is not in the best interest of our community, I will call you out. The reason I am running is because the more I watch and participate in the City Council meetings, the more I conclude that our precious city is under attack. This attack is not by outsiders. Unfortunately, we are under attack from members within our own City Council. We have Council Members who make decisions that are not in the best interest of our community. These bad decisions led me to my platform. Politics second, community first. Tonight, I'm confident you will hear the hollow rhetoric of reaching across the aisle. I wonder, why are we reaching across the aisle when this is supposed to be a nonpartisan position? And I believe that's all, time? So that's all I'm gonna get through.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming. My name's DeeDee Trejo Rolet. I was born and raised here in Carlsbad. I am a mother of two grown children, and I am currently third generation running my family's business, Lois' Deli, that's in the Barrio. Now I'm closer. What I've seen in the city, the development, homelessness, safety issues, are very concerning to me, and I decided to get involved further. I think we all want the same thing, which is safety, a physically strong city. And to, you know, help the homelessness, because they shouldn't be unhoused. We have a lot of issues that we need to come to the table, and I'm hoping that I can throw my hat in the ring and help my community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. First of all, thank you so much to the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce for putting on this great forum, and thank you to Brett, Charles McGonagall, and J.R. Phillips for moderating, Fadi and Corinna for doing all your tech wizardry over there, I appreciate that. My name is Melanie Burkholder, actually I'm running for D1 as well. And I'm a wife, I'm a mom, I'm a business owner, and I'm a homeowner in District 1. And I think it's really important that when we look at the November election, we elect someone that has actually done something for the city of Carlsbad. And I'm gonna give you an example. I think I'm the only candidate in District 1 who's actually improved Carlsbad in that I worked in a bipartisan effort with Democrats and independents to pass the Non-Toxic Carlsbad Initiative, which means that in the city of Carlsbad, we don't spray toxic pesticides known as Roundup anymore. We use an organic alternative, and we actually are making progress with that. And I appreciate being able to have the opportunity to work with folks across the aisle in different sections of this beautiful city and accomplish something that is achieving something like what I do in mental health, which is bringing people to a higher level of functioning than they were when they first entered my office. So I believe I'm qualified for this position. I'm a mental health therapist, and I'm a former federal agent, so I bring something very unique to the table, and I would appreciate your vote, November 8th. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, my name's Sam Ward, and I'm running for District 1. I'm a 20-year Carlsbad resident. I'm a father, I'm a lawyer, and I'm a community volunteer. I moved here 20 years ago because my wife told me to, and told me that this was the right place to raise our kids. She was Oceanside born and raised, she knew what she was talking about, and I'm just smart enough to listen to her. As an attorney, I've spent my career fighting corporate fraud and corruption on behalf of retirees and everyday investors. As a community volunteer, I serve on Carlsbad Unified's Independent Oversight Committee, making sure that the bond funds you all voted in are being spent consistent with the will of the voters, efficiently and effectively for the benefit of our children. I'm running because in the next few years, Carlsbad is gonna be making a number of decisions that are gonna dramatically impact the quality of life in our town for years to come. Addressing homelessness, addressing housing, addressing community character, addressing open space. We need to address homelessness with humane and tested effective methods as opposed to the rinse-and-repete approach of using our police officers as social service workers and healthcare workers. We need to address middle-class housing. Carlsbad was a middle-class town when I moved to it, it's not anymore. And that lack of affordability for middle-class folks affects our businesses, it affects our tax base, and affects our community going forward. I'm gonna touch on these and a lot of other issues tonight, but my time is up.
Can you hear me? I am a 30-year resident of District 1, and now three generations deep. I know the district very well, and knowing the district well is crucial to serving it. I know it from the Audubon Center to Kelly School, from Hoskrove to Tamarack Beach. And if you walk the streets as I have, you'll see that it has very distinctive neighborhoods, not just the Barrio. The area is built up with new construction, mainly infill. It has our oldest parks and one of its newest, but they are among the smallest. The residents are dependent upon automobiles, which are increasingly sharing our streets with pedestrians, bicycles, and with small electric vehicles, which require more attention to public safety. Our beaches are challenged by loss of sand, which is crucial to our identity as a beach community and to our tourist industry. District 1 is the most densely populated, and it is also, oddly enough, the most likely to become the site of affordable housing. It is also the district where the homeless can be found. These are the kinds of problems which we experience within the district personally. And my concern is that we address each of these in a way that pays attention to every citizen, every home, every street, every neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for the opening statements. We are now going to have 60 seconds to answer each one of these questions. And as I said, to keep this simple, we're gonna move on to Dr. Patel. We're gonna let her go ahead and answer this first question, which is, "The city of Carlsbad has declared a state of emergency for traffic problems. Share your thoughts on the situations and your vision for a solution."
Thank you so much, and knowing that there's at least three of us here, I'll answer within the parameters that I'm allowed to as a City Council Member. So with, we have declared a state of emergency, that is accurate. And I think, you know, there were many tragedies that we unfortunately saw in the last few months, and knowing how much we want to ensure the safety and public health of our entire community, we wanted to make sure we were doing something as quickly and expeditiously as possible in order to make sure that we address this. In terms of the vision and what I want to make sure that we do, so we have our sustainable mobility plan. It's something that I think is really important to ensuring that we have multiple levels of transit that have the ability to be safely in the community. So whether that's biking, walking, driving, ensuring that we're doing everything possible to have safe avenues to do all of that. And we will be voting on something tomorrow, which is why I'm not getting into that, and I know the Mayor's here, the other Council Members here. But looking forward to being able to do what we can in order to make sure everyone can move around with city safety. Thank you.
"The city of Carlsbad has declared a state of emergency for traffic problems. Share your thoughts on the situations and your vision for a solution."
I think my thoughts mirror how Chief Williams answered the question that Matt Hall posed to him in the Council. Matt asked him, "Do you need more officers to enforce traffic laws to make it safer?" And Chief Williams answered the question in a very astute manner, I thought. He said, "I need two things from the community. First and foremost, parents, if your kids have e-bikes, please teach them the rules of the road, teach them to ride responsibly." And second, and second from the rest of the community, Chief Williams asked, "Get off your phones, pay attention to what you hear." I happened to drive through the intersection where the woman was killed at Valley and Basswood a few minutes before that accident occurred. And the irony is, I had somebody run a stop sign in front of me at that very intersection a few minutes before it happened. And on that day, two blocks later at Basswood and Highland, somebody in front of me, the same thing, ran a stop sign, so, thank you.
Our City Manager was genius by doing this. It was the fastest I've ever seen a change in behavior in our community. My girlfriend and I just were noticing the other day, you can't find a kid on an e-bike who's not wearing a helmet. This got out, and it got out quickly, and we're very excited about it. We had a disproportionate number of e-bike accidents, and the City Council, with the direction of our City Manager, put this emergency into place, I think it was genius. And I also agree with what Police Chief said. These kids didn't buy that e-bike on their own. Parents bought it for them, parents responsible for showing them and telling them the proper way and safe way to handle it. And the other is, we have to be responsible also. The kids may not, it may be their fault that they pulled in front of us, but we have to make sure that we are watching, and we're very vigilant, and we're not distracted while we're driving. I hope this works, and I hope our e-bike crashes go down dramatically.
Okay, I, state of emergency. I applaud the city for the safety and the law enforcement by enacting that state of emergency. I believe we need to start looking at our development that is happening downtown, because it is affecting our infrastructure and how many cars we can hold. We have two-lane streets, and we have developments that carry 400 cars. I also believe that the children, the young adults without a driver's license should require some kind of school training or after-school training about the laws of the road, because I don't believe they understand it as well as they should. Thank you. So in March of 2021, I actually brought e-bike safety to the Council as a statement, a three-minute statement. And I read the California Code to the Council, and it said what the rules are, what the laws are that people are supposed to abide by when they're riding these e-bikes. I'm a mom, I have a 13-year-old and a 14-year-old, and they do not have e-bikes, but at the schools they attend, there are many, many, many of them. And I personally was just worried about the safety of folks when I brought that to the attention of the Council. And so proud of Carlsbad Police Department, because about two weeks later, they began focusing on education and e-bikes, and what we can do to prevent accidents, and make sure that we're keeping people safe on the streets, especially drivers and riders. So it was wonderful to see that happen. And just for the numbers, e-bike collisions 2019, 30, 2020, 62, 2021, 100, and so far year-to-date, 57. So I'm proud of the Police Department for now going into education, engineering, and enforcement. Thank you.
E-bikes are part of the solution in Carlsbad, because every single person who is on an e-bike going to school, going to work, going to a restaurant in the village is one less car that we have on the road, one less parking space that we have to find in our community. So we have to learn how to better integrate pedestrians, bicycles, and e-bikes, and share the road more effectively. I've been walking District 1 for eight months now, and I can tell you, throughout our city streets, people are going far too fast in their cars. It is not a matter of simply ignoring stop signs. We need traffic calming throughout the Village Barrio and Old Carlsbad. We need low-rise speed bumps. And we need protected bike lanes. These are not expensive things. These are things we can do quickly and cheaply, and we need to do them now to protect our community and to encourage businesses by taking fewer more cars off the road. Thank you.
One of the things that we expect as citizens is that we were able to get to the services and goods we need within a reasonable point of time, about 10 minutes on average. Well, that means that we create the traffic when we go to all these places. The problem is that we are mostly, mostly all citizens quite responsible, but there are some who are not, and we have to take the actions that slow them down and protect us. This may be putting speed bumps around where they don't expect them, and to also take a look at how we can harden the separation between very, very vulnerable people like bicyclists from moving cars. And that can be done. And we also ought to take a look at, is it transit really valuable in Carlsbad? Who uses it? The fact of the matter is, the transit we need is rapid transit to L.A. and San Diego. Take care.
What I did hear today is that this reaction is reactionary instead of a proactive council, and that's what I believe. Why wait for fatalities before you start making changes? We've had e-bikes in Carlsbad for a long time. We've had speeding going off Carlsbad in town. And it's time to have a Council Member who thinks ahead, not after somebody dies. So, I mean, not only in the first district, Mr. Ward, but also the third district as well. I've been walking the district for nine months, and I can tell you how many streets people said they're going too fast, someone's gonna get hurt. The e-bike issue, talk to our principals at our schools, and they want those kids to be licensed.
Okay, we're moving along to question number two. Sandag is the Regional Transportation Authority in San Diego. They have proposed five-fold moves, which proposes to invest significantly in regional public transportation. Please share your views on the allocation of funds to the North County and how traffic on Interstate 5 and within our community should be alleviated.
With regard to the five-fold moves, I believe it is applicable in dense urban areas. I do not believe it serves North County primarily. They have instituted a road user charge as part of that plan, in spite of the pushback by North County in saying it does not help us up here. There is no last-mile feasibility currently to make it practical. So again, in dense urban areas like San Diego to Avista, that plan may be practical, but I do not believe it serves North County.
I think Sandag gets credit for trying, but I think it was a failed try. Especially for those of us who live in the North County. We sit in traffic, we sit on, gosh, Highway 78 traffic's just horrible, and none of this is gonna translate into less traffic in the North County. We are, if you believe we're all gonna get out of our cars and all take public transportation, then good for you, but we're not. We need our cars. Best explanation I got, again, I'm gonna throw out my girlfriend and Best explanation I got, again, I throw out my girlfriend and remember what she said. When moms have to take one kid to school, the other one to ballet, and the other one to baseball, we can't take public transportation. We need to also make sure our roads are available to all of us. And as much as I give credit to Sandag for trying and coming up with an idea, I just don't, simply don't agree with it.
Okay, I would say I disagree as well. I am happy that they widened the freeway, but we do, California loves their cars, and we need to find a better solution. Sandag does need to, we do need to have a relationship with Sandag because they make a lot of decisions that affect our daily lives, that affect our community. And, you know, if we could get mass transit with more direct routes, bus routes, train routes quicker, more often, I think that would help. So if you drove a car here tonight, please raise your hand. Yeah. So while mass transit is a great idea, it doesn't work for areas like North County. I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Blackburn about that. The mileage tax was taken out of the regional transportation plan by Sandag, but I'm gonna tell you a couple of stats. It's likely to come back because they need to fund their $165 billion plan. So the proposed taxes and fees are a half-cent sales tax on the 2028 ballot, an MTS half-cent sales tax, a new fee for Uber and Lyft, and 819 miles of managed toll roads. And you know what that gets us? It still doesn't get us the improvements to the I-578 corridor that we were promised. So Sandag is a sham of a government entity. It's another bureaucracy that we don't even need that continues to tell us what we can do with our vehicles. Thank you.
What every speaker so far has shown you is that Carlsbad fails at public transit and has failed for 20 years. I know this. I work downtown. I take the coaster to work. When I first moved to Carlsbad, I lived over in Calavera. I wanted to take the bus from Calavera to the coaster station downtown. Takes an hour. Used to take an hour. Now it's worse. Takes an hour and a half. Carlsbad fails at public transit. You've failed at public transit. We can do better, and we need to do better. The five is not gonna get any wider. If you're expecting another three lanes, you're gonna be sadly disappointed. You may not like the five big moves, but if you don't wanna spend the rest of your life sitting on freeways, we have to figure out how to make public transit work for more people and how to make more multimodal transit work for more people. Otherwise, we will be in gridlock forever. I promise you.
I think the answer to that comes from what do people actually do? For instance, how many of you commute outside of Carlsbad? How many of you work at home? So there are changes going on, the way we work, the way the economy works, that are gonna alter the nature of our demands for transit and development of highways. We are presently experiencing the expansion of I-5. And when the I-5 is done, for most of us in Carlsbad who go to San Diego, it will be a fairly rapid drive, surprisingly, just as it is on the lower finish parts of that highway. So the point of the allocation of funds is what does it support? And we've got to be clear what we want to support based upon what the citizens need.
I don't believe that we should force people to anything. You should have a choice. I also think that Mayor Hall, Mayor is still here? Mayor Hall's been fighting for North County with several other mayors to get our share of tax revenue back to North County for years. And once again, Sandag has been keeping tax revenues down south. We need to make sure whoever you elect is gonna fight for North County and for Carlsbad specifically. I wanna tell you, I'm all for e-bikes. I'm all for public transportation, but it has to be a choice. Not forcing people out of their cars in California. Don't agree with that. So the five big moves to me are five big, five big bad moves for Carlsbad.
So definitely, I think people should have a choice. I think we all agree on that. However, what we haven't done as a city, and I would agree with Mr. Warren's statement, has been forward-thinking in the past. About 30 years ago, in general, this particular region should have had more options for transit, more options for cycling, more options for pedestrians, and we didn't do that. And so of course, that's what the plan is attempting to do, is to diversify those options. However, the financing mechanisms are where I have concerns. I definitely think that we need to try and figure out how we're gonna finance that because yes, Ms. Merkholder mentioned, it is a multiple-billion-dollar investment, and we have to ensure that the taxpayers are not going to be footing the bill for that. So I think that overall, we just need to make sure that, yes, people do have the choice, that we have the ability to utilize public transit, but also that folks can safely drive in their cars as well.
We're moving along to question three. Homelessness has become a significant issue throughout the county. Share how you think the city of Carlsbad should seek to solve this challenge?
You said that homelessness is a problem in the city. No, it's not. It's a problem throughout the entire United States. I was in Alaska, Alaska of all places, last month. They have homeless all over the place. As a state, we need to take control of it at a state level. You can't ask City of Carlsbad to fix a state level's problem. But we're doing the best we can with the resources we have to make sure that we have a homeless outreach team that's also accompanied by experts and counselors, and they're trying to identify the issues, individual issues of why those people are homeless, not with a one big white brush. But I will tell you that there's two different types of homeless, and I'm running out of time, but I wanna make sure I make this clear. We have people who are like you and me with bad circumstances. We end up living in a car. Or we have people with mental illness can't take care of themselves. Those are homeless. Then we have people who've made a decision to be homeless or to use drugs and call themselves homeless. They're not. They're drug users, and they're usually criminals. And we have to distinguish between the two and treat them very differently.
I agree with Keith. It's not just our problem. It's all over. And it's all over the world. It's a multifaceted issue, and I think we need to get these nonprofits working with our wonderful HOT team and the city and bringing everyone to the table to work on this issue. New York has, out of all their homeless, only 5% are unsheltered. California, 70% are unsheltered. We need to pick up the phone. We need to call these experts. We need to talk to different communities that are being successful in helping their homeless and find out what works, what doesn't work. We need to start using city resources. And homelessness is not a crime, and as the price of affordable housing goes up, we're gonna see a lot more tragic home situations, so. So I'm a mental health therapist, as I mentioned. I'm a former federal agent. I bring a little bit something different to talking points for homelessness because I do believe that each person is an individual. I have two stories to tell you in a minute and a half. One is John, who I met at the gas station. He needed a ride to Oceanside, and I said, "Sure, John, I'll take you to Oceanside." "Where are you going?" "I'm going to my friend's house." "Okay, I'll take you over there." He got in my car, and I almost threw up because it was very foul, but I didn't. And I took him to where he needed to be. He's John. He's not just a homeless guy. The other thing is, I did a ride-along with CPD in Atulongo, and 99% of our contacts were made with homeless people. Now, when you're doing that, those resources are diverted from residents of Carlsbad to the homeless population. So I propose a multidisciplinary team that brings everyone that touches homeless people together to meet them where they are and build their esteem and their confidence and help them and not continue to hurt them, leaving them on the streets. Thank you.
Mental health is a public health problem. Drug abuse is a public health problem. For most of my life, we've treated them like criminal problems, and that's failed policy. I say this as the son of a police officer. Treating these as crimes fails our community, and we have to do better. We need to tackle the causes of homelessness instead of waiting until people commit crimes and toss them in county and hope that it makes them better. It doesn't. We are going to have to address housing on a regional basis. We have to address mental, we have to address mental health and substance abuse treatment on a regional and statewide basis. The Care Corp proposal that the governor has instituted and signed into law is a great start. In October of 2023, when it gets in place, I wanna make sure our police officers have already created dossiers on people who need the kind of help it's gonna provide so we can get them there on day one.
District One, as I said, is the district where you're most likely to encounter homeless. One of the dangers we face, we tend to either generalize them and to sentimentalize them, and that really doesn't help. They have to be treated on a case-by-case basis, and it's very expensive. We have built homeless housing in Carlsbad, in the Barrio, at the cost of $600,000 a unit. Now, that is, that is not the way we're gonna solve this problem. The money is not going to solve the problem. What is going to solve the problem is gradually reducing the situation in our communities that create the homeless city. Solving it at the root is what we have to get to. Thank you.
So I wanna add something different to this conversation about homelessness. How many homeless do we have in Carlsbad?
Five hundred.
Too many.
It changes.
We don't know for sure how many we have in Carlsbad because we have been talking about a point-in-time count that comes from the county that they have to do it because the federal government requires every county to do that to receive money from the federal government. But the Office of Accounting, the federal government, says that count is not accurate. We need to first find out how many we have because I asked the city, "How much are we spending on homelessness?" And we budgeted $6.2 million. Goes to the police department and our Department of Homelessness and housed $6.2 million without even an accurate count. We gotta start there. We gotta know how many we actually have in homeless, and then we can start talking about the solutions to do that. And I am glad the governor now finally realizes after billions of dollars spent in the state.
As a public health professional, I know that homelessness is a preventative issue that we need to make sure that we're dealing with. It's not something that we should be reacting to. My entire career has been making sure that we're thinking of issues from that prevention standpoint. In the last few years, we've had the opportunity to decrease the homeless population in Carlsbad by 20%. I'm sure you saw coverage of that. And that was actually because of us housing folks in permanent supportive housing. And so I, and you can definitely look at the data. I'm sure folks disagree, but we definitely have. And what we've done is we've taken a comprehensive approach. Not only do we have a Housing and Homelessness Services Department, we also have social workers that actually co-authored a plan to advocate for funding from the county for. And then we also have social workers that we've contracted through Interfaith Community Services to ensure that not only are we working with our homeless outreach team, but we also have mental health providers that are on the ground working together with our community. So looking forward to continuing to do that.
I think it's been said by almost everyone up here, homelessness is a national problem. I don't think there's any municipality that can solve its own homeless issues within the constraints of its own budget. I'm a compassionate human being, but I don't find compassion in allowing any other human being to sleep on the streets. That being said, I also understand residents, and residents have rights, and they should, they have the right not to expect someone advocating in their yard, someone screaming at their children. I always tell the city chapters, and I think there has been limited success, but I really believe the city can do a lot more in terms of moving them off the streets into shelters. And so I would like to see that happen on a more proactive basis.
Okay, we're gonna move along to question four. What is your vision for the city of Carlsbad, and what is holding it back from achieving this vision?
Well, my vision for Carlsbad is to slow the growth that is happening at Division One and to look at our infrastructure and how it's impacting our daily lives. When we develop a property, we're only allowed to look at that individual new development. We don't look at how it's going to affect our community. And I think that should change. We have so many issues. We have the C-level. I think we need more open space. We need to deal with homelessness. We need to make sure we're financially a strong city. We need to be a leader in our community, a leader in this county, and take responsibility, take ownership, and have forward-thinking ideas. Thank you. When I think about the vision of the city of Carlsbad, it reminds me of my contract with Carlsbad of pro-safety, pro-business, and pro-failing. We're seeing increases in violent crimes in Carlsbad such as rape, robbery, robbery, and assaults, as well as property crimes such as burglaries and car thefts, and everybody knows about the catalytic converter thefts that are going on. And I think those are the things that we have to consider. While, in particular, the district in the village and barrio is very focused on building and development, I think that's an opportunity for council to be involved in the process and to, like, we have the citizen committee that says, "This is what we like and this is what we don't like." I think that's a good thing, but I think council needs to get more involved in that because we don't want developers to stack and pack developments in the village. And that's what I think. Thank you.
There are about a dozen topics I could touch on on this subject, but I wanna focus on housing. The reality is, the state, however you feel about it, has put a lot of housing mandates down on our community and every community throughout the state. We have two options. We can pretend they're gonna go away, or we can start looking at addressing them proactively. And I believe that Carlsbad can create new walkable communities within Carlsbad without affecting our existing communities. And I think we really need to focus on it and focus on it now because the longer we wait, the more likely it is the state's gonna come and tell us what to do. A lot of us are worried about the overdevelopment in the village and the barrio, and unfortunately, state law is making it easier to do that. We are going to be hard-pressed to tell property owners, "You can't do this with your property." And frankly, I'm not inclined to tell property owners what they can't do with their property. I don't think it's the American way. So I think we need to start focusing on incentives to encourage developers and property owners to build low-density. "Hey, you wanna get to the front of the line with your permit? Go two stories. You wanna wait three years? Go three. Your choice."
We all have a vision of Carlsbad. It's that dream city on the hill where we love each other and care for each other and prosper together in a way that is humane and reflects our values. our values. That is the city that you want to have. Now, what is that city? It is our continuing dream. We dream for the better. We aspire for the better, and you have to decide exactly what that means. We here can only reflect what you think and value. And I think because you here are present, you care, and you want to be involved, and you are the model for what we can do to go forward. Thank you.
I think it would be arrogant of myself to say what is my vision. I think really the vision is created by all of you, and we've had, the success of Carlsbad has been the process, the process where the community has actually weighed in on what the vision of this community should be. And that's where I think is the key here, is that we have a committee right now talking about what this city should look like. I'm going to be behind that group. I'm going to be behind that group, not saying this is Ray Pearson's vision. I'm going to say this is the community's vision. This is where it wants to go. That's the success of the city and the admiration of communities, not only in North County, but throughout the state, because all the stakeholders got an opportunity to weigh in on what they want Carlsbad to be. Thank you.
So a few years ago, the city had adopted community values which the community had the opportunity to weigh in on. And based on those particular community values, I know we've, many of the folks up here have already touched upon many of the things that I think we all value, which is making sure that, you know, of course, our children and our grandchildren have the opportunity to continue to thrive and succeed here in the city of Carlsbad. So from a housing perspective, ensuring that missing middle is taken care of, right? I think the other piece is making sure that we can continue to have a thriving business sector. We've had an amazing opportunity to do that in the last, you know, few decades. And I think our business industry has been doing amazing. We've been able to bring so many jobs to this community, and I think that's really important as we look at it from the perspective of how that brings young families and talent to the table, and also how that helps our school districts and our pipeline as we move forward.
I think the vision for Carlsbad is impacted most greatly right now in the housing area. The state is passing mandates that is removing global control from municipalities. And in terms of land use issues, I fully believe that it's the residents who should determine the makeup of their communities. It should not be mandated at the state level. And so it was mentioned up here that there's two options, and I don't agree with that. I think there's a third option, and I think that we should fight back for. I think it's critical, and Carlsbad has had a long history of citizen-led growth plans that have served us very well. And I hope our next growth management committee does as well as the past.
Is it okay to say, yeah, what he said? That's the problem with speaking toward the end. We have a wonderful city. At the beginning, I told you that I came to the street fair and the city, I fell in love with it. It caught my attention. I loved everything about it. And I could go on for a long time. In fact, I tell people I read about the city. I talk about it like I talk about my grandchildren. I'm very proud of this city. But this, the residents voted into place many years ago, a growth management plan, and we're following that growth management plan. Unfortunately, the state came in and said, they're doing such a wonderful job running the state, now they want to run our city. And that's very frustrating to the council, and we have to do the best we can. So the question is, what are we doing? We're trying to change the laws at Sacramento through our legislative subcommittee or legislative advocates. So wish us luck, but the problem right now is not with the city council. It's with the city council having to fight with the state.
Okay, now we're going to move on to the next section of our forum, which is a series of yes and no questions. So each candidate has two signs in front of them, one yes, one no. As I read the question, they will hold up their chosen sign, maybe hold it up for a few seconds and make sure we get it high enough so everybody can see. And we're going to get started. Our first yes and no question. If a developer proposed adding affordable housing units for our residential development in exchange for zoning variances and tax abatement, tax credit subsidies, would you support it?
All in favor?
All in favor. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next question. The coaster is a green asset to the city of Carlsbad and also a disruption to Carlsbad Village in some ways. Do you support the city investing in both time and money to trench the track in downtown Carlsbad? Okay. We're going to move on to the next question. That was not all in favor. So a year or so ago, the topic of project labor agreements has surfaced in our community. These agreements give preference to labor organizations on public capital improvement projects. Do you support adopting project labor agreements in Carlsbad? Okay, our last yes or no question. Sand Egg has proposed a vehicle mile tax as a way to pay for the five bold moves. This means that every car would pay some tax for every mile they drive. Do you support the vehicle mile tax? Okay, so we thank everybody here. We're going to move on. We thank the candidates. Now we have some audience questions. Okay, so we have. So we, we've, we're going to have four questions from the audience. The first two are going to be yes, no, so keep your signs handy. So the first audience question is yes, no with your signs. If elected, will you pledge to vote to equally distribute low-income housing between all four districts? Well, you'll see pictures, but I'm sure there's plenty of pictures, and we have a video, so we'll be able to get you those answers. The next yes or no question from the audience. Are you in favor of cannabis stores, medical and/or recreational, in Carlsbad? Yes or no? Are you in favor of cannabis stores, medical and/or recreational, in the city of Carlsbad? Okay, we have two more questions from the audience. We're going to go back to the sixty-second answer. So I'll hand the mic, I believe, to Melanie would be where we've left off. So this first question from the audience, the economy appears to be in a downward trend. The economy appears to be in a downward trend. How will you deal with this in the future budgets for the city of Carlsbad? You have sixty seconds.
So, yeah, the economy is in a downward trend. Our paychecks aren't keeping up with the inflation rates that we're seeing right now. Fortunately, Carlsbad has about a three point two percent unemployment rate versus the national average of about four point three percent. So we're doing pretty well. We actually employ eighty-five thousand people with our five big life sciences, tech, clean tech, innovative sports, and hospitality, and restaurants, and visitor, or, what's that called when you come here? Tourism, that's it. That word just left me. So fortunately, Carlsbad is doing very well. In the last quarter, we did get a lot of money from tourism over the summer with the transient occupancy tax that folks pay at the hotels when they come here. So I think what we have to do is analyze the budget and look at those one hundred new jobs that we added and see what added benefit we get from that as residents of Carlsbad and make some of those tough choices. Does this make sense moving forward, or does it not? And I'm the person to do that. I signed up to take bullets for residents. I'll take bullets for residents as well.
Carlsbad is a little different than a lot of its neighbors in that we have less of our tax base focused on property taxes than our neighbors, which makes us a lot more exposed to economic downturns. TOT revenue fell off, I think, thirty-five percent during COVID. It is now back, almost back to where it was. But as soon as the economy starts sliding into recession, that will slide first. Sales taxes, which are a huge chunk of our revenue stream, in large part because of the auto dealerships over here, is the second part of that that's going to decline. So we have to be very conscious going forward if we manage our expectations if we are sliding into a recession. We have to be thoughtful about the positions we've hired and maybe decide not to fill them if they go empty. But we really need to start thinking long-term about how we can have a more secure tax base and focus more on property taxes as opposed to TOT, which is very fickle for our tax base and a hard way to pay for our firefighters, our police, and our streets. Thank you.
The impact of the economy during town in terms of the city is effect on its taxes. We have a system where we depend highly on taxes collected by the state and ourselves, and it is a very complex one. If the economy turns down and our revenues turn down, that means we have to cut spending and delay spending. You cannot spend what you don't have.
I'm going to go ahead and read the question one more time so we're all back on the same page. The economy appears to be in a downward trend. How will you deal with this in the future budgets of the city of Carlsbad?
It's one of my favorite questions as a businessman who's ran companies and had run into this situation. It was a fabulous article in the Coast newspaper, and the mayor talked about the ten million dollar deficit that we're going to experience in 2025. The Finance Department had already forecasted we're going into a deficit if we continue to do what we're doing, which was hiring too many people here in Carlsbad. So what's the solution? Solution is, just like for all of your households, if this was the same situation, you got to tighten your belt. You got to say, what are the things that are critical? I want to make sure that we continue the great services we have here in Carlsbad. Not take away from those, not take away from safety, but we really have to, say, freeze any more hiring. We need to say, every department come back with a plan that is going to get at this budget and not reactive, not wait till 2024 or now. We start doing it now so we can get that budget by 2025 in a good position. Thank you.
So over the course of the last four years, we've increased our reserves over forty percent. We have had, this is the highest reserves that we've actually had in the history of Carlsbad. We're at about a hundred and thirty million dollars in reserves. In terms of looking forward, I agree, we do need to diversify our revenue streams. Sales tax and TOT, transit occupancy tax, were hit pretty hard in the last few years, and property taxes is our other one. You know, those are the three that really bring in the revenue. I think what we really need to make sure of, and I know we had looked at some options, residents had spoken very strongly against wanting to go forward with those particular options. The council voted to also vote that down in the last few months. But what we need to do is move forward, is think about other ways that we can add to that and ensure that we can continue to be fiscally strong and ensure that we can continue to provide the quality of the services that you all deserve.
I think we're facing a period of incredible economic uncertainty worldwide. It's almost unprecedented times, maybe, since World War II. And Mayor and I don't agree on everything, but on this, we do agree that the city should manage its finances in an extremely prudent manner. And I agree with his advocacy for a pause, and we need to look and see what the global economy is going to do. Because it looks like we may be headed into recession. With recession comes reduced tax receipts and a budget deficit. We're staring that in the face. The pause, to me, means taking a look at all the people we've hired and certainly putting a hold on what we've planned to hire in the coming year in order to be able to offer the services that residents come to, that I'm abating.
First, I want to thank all my predecessor council members, Matt Hall, Mark Packard, Bud Lewis, and Colton, and all of them who were with the city together even before them. They've put together a very well diversified source of income, which has made us the envy of all of our neighboring cities. We have income coming from property taxes, transient occupancy taxes, and sales taxes. We have done very, very well. So well, we've been able to put together double or triple what our savings, our backup amount of money should be. Well, with that said, now, if we start to go into any kind of a recession, I've had extensive conversations with our city manager. There's projects we can delay by a certain number of years. We have positions as people retire or leave. We can evaluate whether those are absolutely necessary for safety and infrastructure. So we aren't flexible enough to move with the economy as we have to.
Well, as Keith said, it's horrible to be the last one because everyone said something already. I just think it's basic economic day one in class is balance that checkbook. It's not rocket science. If it's not coming in, it shouldn't be going out, and we need to take a look at that, and we need to be holding people accountable for that.
So our last question from the audience. Make sure everyone can hear me. Gun violence is now the leading cause of death for children. What steps would you take to reverse the rate of gun deaths? I'll read it one more time so everybody can hear it. Gun violence is now the leading cause of death for children. What steps would you take to reverse the rate of gun deaths?
I'm proud to be a Moms Demand candidate because I believe regional challenges affect our community. I said that as a gun owner, which might surprise some people, but the reality is gun violence is touching everybody in our community. It touched me a couple of years ago. I want to see us be more aggressive as a city and as a county on using gun violence restraining orders. I want to partner with our school districts to work on safe storage notifications for every single parent we have raised. I happen to know a pretty good one who's running for school board who I think I can work with on those issues. Gun violence, either through violent crime or suicide, is impacting us all daily. Getting fewer guns out into our community and getting more safe storage is going to save lives. I am not the NRA's candidate. I'm not the gun industries candidate. I'm happy to be a Moms Demand candidate. Thank you.
This is a national debate, not a Carlsbad issue. But let's face it, we argue about this based upon a particular amendment in our constitution as to what it meant. My own feeling is that it did not mean we should be arming ourselves with military weapons. I think there is a way to come to a conclusion that allows people to use guns for personal protection and hunting and other legal purposes, but eliminate them as much as possible from what in effect becomes a criminal element. We need peace between ourselves and disarmament. We need peace between ourselves, and disarmament is the way to peace internationally and nationally.
Now, with this Keith before I stepped on the school board, and I probably was in the same boat because I agree with this is a national conversation going on. Here's what I think. My track record on the school board has been about protecting kids. We did a bond issue recently. In fact, some of the bond committee are here, and thank you. And part of that bond issue, and thank the community for voting for that bond, by the way, it was protecting our kids because there is so much violence going on throughout. And that's what I supported, was real solutions to protect our kids. This has become a politicized issue, which has a lot of tentacles to it. And I'm very concerned that Carlsbad gets caught into that mouthstream of politicizing issue. Thank you.
So I'm also a Moms Demand candidate and a gun supporter. I'm disappointed to hear that my opponent wouldn't answer the question and also did not vote for safe storage on the school board. He's the only member on the school board that did not vote for safe storage ordinance. It is a common sense law that anyone can put into effect in their local jurisdiction to protect kids. It's not saying we're taking anyone's guns away. It's literally just saying safely store your guns. That's it. And as a mom of a toddler, I want to feel that I can feel safe sending my child to school. I don't have a school-aged child. After Yvaldi, I know how many communications I received talking about what we're doing to protect our children here in the community in Carlsbad. So I will always protect our children. I will do whatever I can to make sure our kids are safe. That doesn't mean we're going to take away your guns. It just means make sure we store them safely.
So I was raised in a family of hunters and fishermen. I've been around guns and ammo my entire life. I wasn't allowed to touch them or come near them until I had satisfactorily completed a gun safety course offered by the NRA. And so I was taught responsible gun handling as a child. That I see as kind of gone out of vogue in society. Parents don't do that with their children anymore. So as a gun owner, I fully support gun rights, but I don't agree that military weapons should be in the hands of the general population. And for me, handguns are only for one purpose, and that's shooting other human beings. And so I believe in safe, common sense laws covering all weapons.
Working as a cop for 43 years, I experienced and watched all of the problems that come along with gun ownership. But I also acknowledge that we have a right to have guns, and we have to have them in our homes for protection if that's what you choose to have. So recently, I was approached by Dr. Priya Batel, who asked me about the safe storage. I went to the Gun Owners Association's president, and I said, "Tell me the other side. Help me understand." And I was so surprised to hear him say, "Oh, we support it. We want the guns to be in responsible people's hands, and we want it to be stored safely." I was surprised that that was the answer I got. So as a result of that, I support safe storage, and I also advocate for personal responsibility. That means parents lock up their guns. If you think putting your gun on the top shelf under your underwear drawer or someplace like that is going to not be found, these kids find those things. So you've got to lock them up.
Well, I support our amendment to bear arms, but I am first and foremost a mother, and I want my children safe at all times. Even though they're grown adults, you just don't know what can happen. And so I also support the lock and the safety box and better safe than sorry.
So yeah, thank you. This question is a little bit personal for me. I lost my brother to suicide by a gun. I'm a former law enforcement. I've been shooting guns all my life. I've taught my children as much. And I 100% agree with locking guns up and keeping them safe and stored safely. You should never handle one should you not want to. You should never be subjected to that should you not need to be. In schools, I actually advocated for the peer assistance leadership program, and we got it because children in high school talk to other children in high school. They don't often want to talk to adults. This is a nationally recognized accredited program that helps prevent things like gun violence. So if we talk about gun violence, we actually have to talk about the children that are being affected and also could be impacted by it. Thank you.
Okay, I believe, Sam, did you? Yeah, you did. I'm sorry. I told you I might make one mistake. That was it. Okay, so now we're going to give each candidate 90 seconds to deliver their closing statement. We're going to go ahead and start with Alan.
Thank you. I'm here to serve. I'm here to work for the good of our neighborhoods. I am not running against anybody. I think you have a fine, brave candidates here, all of them willing to do the work. I have experiences, which I think is very valuable, as a worker in government and industry at every level. I have skills in analysis, management, personnel, and physical, and I know the difference between management and governance. Think about it.
So I have just a couple of questions for all of you. And it is, do you think Carlsbad is in a better fiscal shape than four years ago?
Yes.
No, it's not. We did not have a forecast saying that we were going to have a deficit. Do we know how many homes we have here in Carlsbad? No, we don't know that. And my opponent talks about a 20% reduction based on a number that the GAO of our federal government said is inaccurate. Now, that is not leadership, and that is not even being completely transparent to all of you in our community. What you'll get from me is a transparent, honest, forthright candidate and council member and not playing around with numbers to make you look good. Thank you.
So again, I'm Priya Batel. I'm the council member that serves District 3. I look forward to continuing to serve you for the next four years, come November. I grew up here in Carlsbad. I have a son. I want to make sure he has the ability to continue to thrive and strive to succeed here in Carlsbad. As I said before, I think the last four years have been very, very dynamic. It has been a time that has been trying for all of us. And I think that one of the things that I can pride myself in is that I try very hard to be a very positive, collaborative, and really forward-thinking leader. I think that's something that we really need. In this divisive climate that we have throughout our nation, it's really important for us not to point fingers. It's really important for us to try to figure out solutions. Solutions-oriented thinking is what we really need. We need to teach our kids how to work together, how to be able to really appreciate the diversity of our community, the diversity of thought. You know, we might come from different ends of this spectrum, but we still need to work together to make it move forward. So for me, that's what's important, is a leader that can actually work with everyone regardless of what somebody thinks. We all come from different backgrounds. That's really admirable. You have an amazing choice of candidates that you can choose from. So I look forward to being able to continue serving that particular capacity. I am really blessed to have had this opportunity of a lifetime to serve my community. And again, Priya Batel, District 3 representative, looking forward to earning your support in November.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard from two very different candidates here tonight. It appears my opponent has had a burning desire to be mayor for a long time. While I, on the other hand, never aspired to this job until it was obvious that no one else in Carlsbad would step up and give the residents a choice. And that choice is clear. I'm the only candidate who is unencumbered by financial or ethical conflicts. I don't have any, I don't answer to any outside interest. And as a product of this community... I'm sorry. I just, see, that's why I'm mayor. So in closing, if you believe that character always matters, if you believe in Carlsbad's long history of fiscal prudence, if you believe in the concept of one Carlsbad like I do, and putting together the differences, and working together for a better future for all, then I'm asking for your vote. Thank you very much.
When I speak to groups, I always talk about the differences between Matt Hall and me. And we agree on about 80% of the issues, and we completely disagree on about 20% of the issues. But we understand each other's position. Well, I tell you that because I ran against him 12 years ago for mayor. And one of the things that Matt said over and over was, Keith will be a great mayor in the future, but he only has employee experience and only has two years on the council. That's not enough experience. And you know what? This is one of the 80% that I agreed with Matt. Looking back on it, two years of experience on the council and working for the city for 20-something years was a lot of a foundation, but it wasn't what it took to make me the best mayor candidate. Now, we're looking at many more years of working for the city, 14 years of serving on the council, and working on a lot of different subcommittees like the Encina Wastewater and the County Water Authority, and building relationships with the county. So now I feel like I've built that foundation. It pains me to say, Matt Hall, you were right that I needed that experience, and now I have that experience. My goal as the next mayor is to bring our council to be more cohesive. Not saying they have to vote with me. I'm saying that I want it to be a very well-run cohesive council like it was when I first came on to the council 14 years ago.
I am running because, as I mentioned, I'm a little concerned about where my village by the sea is disappearing. I believe we need to preserve the character of the village and the vario. That is the jewel in our tiara. That's why people come here. That's why you bought here, and it will continue to happen. I'm not against growth. I'm wanting to slow it down. I also want to support small businesses. We had a little issue during the pandemic. And I think they are the heart of the village. They need to be kept viable, and we need to continue to support all of our small businesses in Carlsbad. I am not a politician, as you can tell. This is not a stepping stone for me. I am wanting to serve my community, to pay it back, to pay it forward. I had a wonderful childhood. I've had a wonderful adulthood. I'm still in the village where I grew up. I deal with all walks of life every day. I am a part of the community. So we've talked about a lot of things tonight, e-bikes, sail bag, bad word, homelessness, the direction of sea bag, the budget, and gun violence. And I think what we need to talk about with respect to District 1 is the community and the commitment to the citizenry that whoever is elected in that seat will not use it, as DeeDee said, as a stepping stone. And I'm happy to make that commitment this evening, as I've said all along, since I said, yes, I'll run for D1. So that is a commitment I'm willing to make to the residents of D1. And I think also, I just want to go back to quickly just the connection with the district. We have all of these wonderful places to go eat at restaurants and shop in the village. I was the lady when COVID hit that said, "Wait a minute. We can't shut down our small businesses. That's the backbone of the economy in Carlsbad. We have to fight for them." And I did. And I went to those businesses, and I ate at those restaurants because I didn't want them to close their doors like that pizza place after 43 years and not be able to feed their families and the families of so many others of who they employ. I grew up in the restaurant business. I know you're married to that. That is your blood, sweat. Everything that you do every day is for it. So I just want you all to understand that's where I'm coming from. It's about Carlsbad, not me. Thank you.
All right, folks. I can assure you, you're not going to see my name on the ballot one, two, three, four, five times in the next eight years. I am running for this office, this office. I have a job I like. I'm going to do it until I'm done working. I'm asking you to make me one vote on the city council. I've worked hard to build coalitions. I've got the endorsements of two of our sitting city council members. I've got the endorsement of the majority of our board of supervisors. And I made a decision to try and seek those out because to get things done, I need to get to three. It will never just be me, 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 me getting something done. I want to thank our council because recently, when you put them in Rose Street Pool on the ballot, you gave us a range. You said it was not going to cost more than $25 million. Now, there was somebody on the dais that night who said, "Wait a second. What happens if it costs more than that? Are we going to have to go back to voters?" Hell, yes. And I say that because today, this week, is the one-year anniversary of the city spending another $47 million on the golf course. $47 million, a total of $70 million, which our city will never get back, which has an opportunity cost of over $1 million a year at the historically low interest rates we've been having. It's probably going to be more like $2.5 million next year. I want to address homelessness. I want to address traffic safety on a broad and aggressive basis. And I want to address housing in a way that keeps the character of our communities. And I hope I can get your vote in November. Thank you so much.
Okay, with those closing statements, our forum is going to draw to an end. I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming out tonight and sharing with all of us and being open and visible and present for our community. It means a lot. It's what Carlsbad is all about. So, and I thank everyone here tonight for being wonderful. We had a great time tonight. We did a great thing for democracy in our city. So thank the candidates and thank you all. And lastly, I want to recognize that this was brought to you by the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce. This is, the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce, led by Brett Carlsbad, is there to do everything it can to make Carlsbad a better place to be, to work, to visit, and do everything that we can to make this where we want to live. So take a moment tonight to thank all the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce staff. They did a great job. So thank you all and everyone.